Greg, you haven't really been here. I tended to let people talk as long as they would like to talk because I thought it was appropriate. These gauzees made me bring a timer so if the room was full, we were going to limit you to two and a half minutes of some such thing.
You got it? Go for it. You ready to roll?
It is late. We do have a quorum. I don't need to do minutes or anything, right? So, we're just going to open this to the public?
Just go.
All right. Let's go then.
Do we have an official meeting?
Yes, we have a quorum.
We do have a few little procedural things to start. There was a notice of special meeting circulated because we intended to have a meeting after the public hearing. I am informed that to avoid the issue of abode service on all the commissioners, we would agree at this hearing to waive that requirement of abode service. So, we would need a motion and a vote to waiver abode service of the notice of special meetings.
We need to do that before we have the public session?
Before we have the special meeting.
Okay.
We could do it now.
Okay. If you would like to, would you so?
Some of them.
Okay. So, motions been made?
Right. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We now have a new abode. Okay. Okay. This is a public hearing. So, the purpose of the hearing is for feedback on what we've done as a commission and just very, very briefly to let you know that we did start at the beginning of our charter. We went virtually all the way through to the end. We have made substantial changes to several of the sections. Our goal here tonight is to hear constructive criticism and/or praise for what we've done, mostly praise we anticipate. But if there's issues that you have, we'd love to hear them. Obviously, we're not here to debate the issue, but members of the commission may actually try to explain why we did what we did. For the time being, I'm not going to limit the time that people can speak, so let's just get started and be as concise as you can, but let's have some fun with this. Who would like to address us first? Mr. Urice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. First of all, I'd like to commend the commission on a job well done overall. I know you've had a lot of critics and cynics in the process, but I know how difficult the job that you have is, and I think overall congratulations should be added. There are a couple of changes that you proposed in the charter I think are especially good. I believe putting a limit on non-referendum bonding is an excellent move on your part. I'm glad you did revisit that. Whether I concur with a number or not is a less consequence than we'd actually have a limit on that now, which I think is a good thing for the systems down there. Another that I think is a particularly good move for Danbury is moving the terms to four years. I was a little hesitant about that at first, but the more I thought about it, having been in both elected and appointed positions in this town, there is a big learning curve and there's something to be said for a little more continuity in those positions. So, I think that was a very wise move on your part. There is one section of the proposed changes I'm a little concerned to be a little bit, not so much intent, but the result as it's written. I have in the past, both as primarily as one of the council, been very concerned about ordinance, the wording of ordinances. Some very good ordinances have come forth between the board this company, this council and other commissions that had great intent. But as we know, intent is not how law is interpreted. It's not how it's supposed to be interpreted. It's supposed to be interpreted as it's written. In Section 7-8, there was modifications made to the assessments or the ability of the town government to assess individual property owners as opposed to the general population. I understand the intent behind this change and probably the intent has a lot of merit. I'm not going to argue merits one way or the other. But the way it was worked is pretty much, if you read it literally, carte blanche. It allows the city to assess individual property owners. In any instance that whatever administration is there, so deems that that as an assessable project. It's not definitive, whereas the sewer and water is very definitive process, very definitive language. This, in theory, it reminds me of my grandmother, dear old lady that lived all these years in her home, and the city decided the Kerb Street did nothing for her house, but it was a valuable investment, and she was an amount equivalent to three months of her social security. Now, it might not be much to somebody making, you know, earning a salary, but to individuals whose income is very limited, these assessments can be devastating. Just think for a minute, what if you were without two or three months of your salary? That's how it is to people in these kind of positions. So, if there's intent to do certain type of projects in an assessment law, let's enumerate them. Let's not write blank check for whatever administration happens to be in the corner office on any given year. The intent of the highway or public works department, all well good. The intent on administration, all well good. The wording is bad, and I beseech you to please restrict the wording in that so that we are not, if you will, at the mercy of public works because taxpayers, we pay all the bills, no matter how much the state says we bring to your city. We send a heck of a lot more to Hartford than Hartford sends to us, so we pay 100% of our bills here. In a tough financial year, an administration could say, wow, how about all these road projects? We can put those on assessment. We don't have to put it in our budget. That could happen. That could really happen. And that's just one little example, but that's the way this is awarded now. There's just no restriction on really what can be assessed to the property owners. Again, it's a matter of who's interpreting the value added or as it's worded, what gets assessed. It's just too broad. But again, back to the beginning, I thank you for your efforts and overall your job well done. I think there's just that one little refinement that is not a little refinement. It's a big issue for the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from any commissioners? Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Then?
First, I'd like to thank you, Carla, for coming on the show. You've done a really good job of bringing it to the public. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'd like to start off with the terms of office of four years. I can live with the four years, but I am very concerned about the length of the ballot. Think of the three top offices, 21 councilmen, 11 Board of Ed members, meeting members, three alternate zoning board members, five constables, and the zoning commission. That's a total of 52 positions on one ballot every four years. I personally think it's much too much. Would you please give some consideration to splitting the ballot? For example, elect the mayor, the treasurer, the town clerk, and councilman one year, and then two years later, elect the zoning commission and the board of ed. That kind of averages it out so that there's approximately 25 on each of the two ballots. And there could be an unexpected benefit to splitting the ballot, as I suggested. If you had an ordinance or a referendum or something else that needs to go to an election, you would have something else on the ballot that would bring people out besides just the question with the referendum on bonding. And it wouldn't cost that much because you're already running a ballot. It would take you all writing it into the charter, I believe, in the beginning to get that started, but it would divide it. I mean, can you see filling in those little holes for 52 holes all the way down the ballot? It would take forever to get it done. Section 3.3, I'd like to see the legislative assistant appointed by the council and approved by the mayor. I don't like the two branches of government, legislative and executive, being that totally combined. This assistant can always reach a council president by phone if necessary for city business. One of your reasons for doing it the other way is the council president is not available, but he is by phone at all times, and they have been since I've been watching the government. Number three is referendum, the number of signatures needed. I know you changed it down to 10%, and thank you very much for that. That's 3,400 signatures, and actually, it's probably going to be more because in order to ensure that you have enough registered voters, you've got to get approximately another 400 or 500 over and above because people don't remember whether they're registered or they're registered in another town, and they don't want to turn you down, and it's always tested. 5% is 1,700 signatures, and 3% is 1,020 signatures with the 34,000 people that are registered today. I believe it should be 5% or 3%. And if any of you have ever tried to collect signatures of registered voters, all three numbers are unattainable in 30 days. I've done it. It's impossible. These numbers effectively close out the voter in the process, so please reconsider this. I too wanted to speak to 7.8, page 27, the public improvement assessments. I am very uncomfortable with the wording here that refers to public works or improvements. If it was added to cover private roads becoming public roads, then you should say so. I was told that that was the intent, but even if it is the intent of this commission or this administration, no one knows what a future mayor may read in this portion of the charter. Curbs, paving roads, parks, neighborhoods could eventually be charged to homes and neighborhoods. If the wording in this portion is allowed to stand, please revisit it. We just had our Highland Avenue park fixed up, and if they can say, oh, that makes your house more valuable because you live near it and you could then advertise you live near a park, they might be able to assess my house for the improvements to the Highland Avenue park. So, I'm very concerned about that. Section 7-10 on borrowing, again, I feel the people are being closed out of this process. 2.5 million per project, that may be okay, but I remember one citizen speaking before you as commission and said even with inflation from 1977, that figure should only be 1.5 million. We, the public, don't get to vote until the administration needs more than 5 million per year. A number I feel is much too high. Don't get me wrong, I'm very relieved you have a cap. I just wish it were lower. I would also like to praise you for not combining planning and zoning. I really believe the public is better served by having two times to speak before commission Page 31, 8.3, I believe this should not include, that's, this is conflict of interest. I believe it should not just include elected officials and employees, but their extended families as well. I know of several situations where other relatives of people that worked here got jobs in companies doing different things for the city, and I'm uncomfortable with that. I appreciate you doing the periodic review of the charter. I think that's an excellent idea so that it doesn't go 30 years before we do it again. That's all we want. I also sincerely want to thank you for all your hard work on the charter, and that includes you, Mr. Gatchop.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Somebody else like to address us?
A few words anyway. Good evening, everybody. I'm Greg Williams, 104 Franklin Streets. I've watched several of these meetings on the tapes that you all were able to provide the public. Thanks, Ms. Loma, for doing that. So, I just wanted to commend you first and foremost for spending an enormous amount of time. I'm sure this has been fun and exciting and some instances. Like me, I'm a concerned citizen, like the few that are here, and probably a lot of folks that probably talk about it in town but just aren't able to get here. But some of my concerns, of course, these people have already eloquently have stated in retrospect, the borrowing. I think it's a little bit too much money for one individual or one administration to handle on one aspect. The legislative assistant position, I think, blends between executive and legislative branch. I think that person should be, in a sense that you all have spoken, a learning curve. You should probably hire somebody, and that should probably go through civil service, that you have the appropriate person to do the appropriate job versus somebody who's appointed who may or may not be a fit for the position and maybe more on a political aspect. Just, I do believe in the aspect of assessing of the public works as far as improvements in the sense of assessing the homeowner. I think that that's something that you all should look at. I want to go back. I'm sorry I'm jumping all over the place, but in retrospect of the council and the legislative assistant, I do believe that the council should have more of a, what's the word, a community outreach perspective in their wards because they are elected through the constituents who inhabit their wards, and it seems as soon as they get elected here and in the processes of the council, they kind of get, their voice kind of gets silent, and it gets to be bubbled up, I'd say, in a sense to the few or the many that have power that make decisions in a sense. I do believe that the council, in a sense of having responsibility for the legislative assistant's budget or salary, should constitute the council having a budget to operate and do the things that they need to do as a legislative branch for the city of Danbury. That's pretty much it. Thank you so much. I commend you guys again for doing this hard work, and thanks for participating in the speech.
Yes, before you run away, the last point you made is you think the council needs its own budget?
Yes, I do, because if you're going to have a legislative assistant, in my opinion, that's working solely for the council, and that person, as it states now, is appointed, well, we as a city are still paying that individual, and they work primarily for the council. I, speaking from the past and being on the council myself, it seemed that I worked and many other council people before me, during me, and then probably after me, worked very hard in getting votes in their particular wards or districts, but then as soon as they get here, it just seems that they, you don't hear a lot of what the council people do in their communities in order to reach out to their constituents who voted for them in a sense of being that elected official that is in contact with the public, that everyday person who inhabits their wards. So, I do feel that the council should impose a little bit more power in governing themselves and having the people or the resources to actually do what we elect them to do, I think.
Okay. So, the follow-up question is, so you'd be in favor of the council hiring?
I would be in favor of the council hiring or in a sense of hiring a legislative assistant with the approval of the mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any other members of the public that would like to address us? Seeing none, we'll close the public session, the public hearing. Thank you all. Your input has been valuable throughout the process, so it's been fun. Now, I think I need to call to order our special meeting. Is that? I now call it to order. Mr. Gatchop, did you want to start off our special meeting? Do you want to address us with where we are?
You should have now before you this summary sheet that I put together in an attempt to at least indicate what kind of changes the commission proposes with respect to each section that you touched on. And you should also have a copy of the draft, record, third version. And it's in that.
Excuse me, Rick. You say third version?
Yes.
Is this the one that was handed out at the last meeting?
No.
It's been changed since then?
Yes. It's been changed to reflect the modifications you made at the last meeting. And I think Carlo sent it around.
It was sent around.
Or license. Or Peter sent it around.
Yeah.
But there are copies here, and.
Did you get a copy?
Yeah.
I don't think I did.
December 29.
The last one I had.
They're all dated, December 29.
Just the last one was the one that we got at the last meeting. So.
December 24.
This is draft.
This has come around, right. And also, I will.
Did you get the proposed changes? I just got the proposed changes.
How will we know which is that draft compared to?
I think you put a 3 on it. Put a 3 on it. All right. Well, this one seems much thicker than this one. What am I missing?
Could be the format. And just for the commission members.
The one I handed to you for today's meeting is copied on both sides, and perhaps you printed the other one.
You got that right. Oh, I love my paper saving.
And for the commission members, if you would, I also made up, I copied people's list of all the changes. Made it a little more user-friendly. In addition, I've handed you a letter that I'm at least proposing at this time to send to the mayor and to the council. That, again, most of the wording came from Rick with English corrections made by a former English teacher and member of the commission, Mrs. Lee.
I can help you determine what drafts you have. I'm working with the version that you got last month. Or was it this month?
It was this. No, it was right before it was given.
Yeah, we were.
11-24.
Yeah, because I have an 11-22, and then I've got one that I printed out on 12.
December 29. Twice.
Rick, let's go to the last change you made.
Yeah, let's quickly review the four sections that were changed based on your request of me last time. And those, all of the, all four of those changes should be reflected in the copy that's on the table and the copy that Peter sent to you by email a few days ago. The sections that are involved are, I'll just read them out, and we'll go back to them. They're 2-6, 3-1, 3-2, and 3-4. If you open the version that I'm offering today and turn to 2-6, what happened there was that there was some language that related to how vacancies get filled. And once they were filled, for how long they were filled. And so, if you take a look at 2-6, see the deletion in there? Well, that's the result of what you did, and also, there was some language that we had added that we then scrapped, so that's no longer in there. But if you were to look at the current version of the charter and compare it with 2-6 as proposed tonight, the change you would see is change 40 days to 60 days and delete that strike-through language.
And in effect, the current charter then is, 2-6 is basically five lines, whereas the previous 2-6 was 12 or 15 lines because it had language in there regarding the biennial municipal election.
Right.
Okay. So, then this means this is version 2.
Yeah, it seems to be changed everywhere else.
Towards the bottom of version 2, in Section 2-6 of version 2, about four lines from the bottom, it had in capital letters in accordance with the provisions of Section 2-2B.
Of this, yes.
Yeah. That's been eliminated.
Got it.
All right. So, that's 2-6. That's the change you made in 2-6.
Yes.
Now, the next change you made in 3-1 was to, very appropriately, delete that comma after such compensation because it had no business being in there, even though it was in the charter.
You know, before they.
Yeah, it was grading. That was a nasty comment. I don't know what they were saying.
Yes, it made no sense.
No.
No.
Okay. So, that was good work.
All right.
The next section that you modified last time was 3-2.
Yes.
And what you did last time was to delete the word biennial. That's about five lines from the bottom. And then you deleted some language that you had previously added, that again, related to filling of vacancies and how long that filling was good for, until the next election or what. And so, if you were to look at version 2, the one that you got before tonight, you'll see, you would see some capitalizations about five lines from the bottom, from 10 to five lines from the bottom. At said election, the office shall be filled for the remaining unexpired portion of the term. That language, that's been eliminated. So, what you see in the current proposal that you got tonight, when compared to the existing charter, is what you see here in this 3-2. Lot of changes. We eliminated the third Monday, November, because that was bad language. Replaced it with what's been practiced, which is the organizational meeting occurs the first Monday of December when they choose a president, and it goes on to describe what happens if the mayor is unable to perform the duties of his office. Okay?
Yep.
And the last section that you changed is 3-4. And there was a typo towards the maybe 10 lines from the bottom, general law or specials laws. That was bad. So, we eliminated the S after special, after special, not specials laws. And that's it. Did draft 2 and draft 3, did we correct the staggered election for the board in draft 2? In draft 2? No, I believe that was. So, the one presented tonight includes that change? Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. That's in 2-2. Let's see. 2-2, A to C. And what I had to do in order to get everything to jive was to make interim two-year terms, get everybody on the same sequence. So, that would become, everybody would be on the same cycle beginning in 2015?
Correct. We have our draft. Okay, we have our draft.
So we said, so in twenty fifteen, it will be even more stagnant.
Right, the stagnant will be gone. Based on the public hearing and where we are so far, does, are there any other changes that anyone wants to look at at this time?
Are we going to discuss public input, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Now is the time to discuss public input?
You know, I, I would just like to address the concern about bonding. I think we have heard testimony from a number of people. And I think what we have finally concluded was probably, uh, the right, the right process. Whether the dollar amount, I think that can be debated back and forth. I believe the dollar amount is consistent with, with the goals and the objectives of the capital plan and what is needed. And I do believe that the cap does restrict, uh, any administration from, uh, just running away and, and without getting public, uh, you know, input or, or approval for bonding. So I am, I am very comfortable with the commission has come up with the funding piece of it.
Any other comments?
On bonding?
Um, or any other section of the charter?
I was, I was confused over what, um, Mr. Juris was saying about section six dash eight.
Seven, eight?
About the assessment I was concerned about.
Why don't we take, take a look at that?
We changed sewer and water to say public improvement.
Well, the idea was originally that, I think mostly, that was to expand that to allow for, um, private roads to be paved and then taken over by the city. And that would be assessed to people. But there seems to be a question of how broadly is that written? And do we want to look at that and tighten that up? We wanted it obviously to be more than just sewer and water projects. Because obviously, if you're septic and they put a sewer line by, they will assess you for the cost of, of going by. And the, and the intent initially was to expand that mostly for private roads. So the question is, is the language too broad and could it be tightened up and should it be tightened up? Mr. Gotch?
The reason why I propose that to you is because there are ordinances on the books that are based on current state law. That allow the common council to assess property owners for benefits, special benefits to their properties for public improvements generally. And it seemed unusual to me that there was a charter provision that addressed public improvements with respect to sewer and water, but not generally. Even though under the ordinances, that was possible. And so frankly, I viewed it as a matter of being consistent. Uh, here you have a section that allows for assessments, you might as well cover the subject. Uh, it is not necessary. If you choose to just eliminate all of the changes we've made to seven dash eight, the ordinance is still there. It's been there for twenty years and nobody's assessed anybody for curbing. They could have. But it's rather difficult. In, in fact, you know, you are right, uh, Mr. Chairman, that what comes to mind are these private roads. And there was one occasion in which the council considered a special assessment attributable to, uh, costs of improving a private road to bring it up to city spec so it could be accepted into the public road system. And I think there may have been a constellation of reasons why that didn't happen. But one of them was that in order to create this assessment process, uh, for, in, in that context, you would have to decide, out of the hundred dollars it costs to do this. What portion is specially benefits property owners and what portion benefits the public generally? And, and I don't think they could do it. Uh, I mean, they could have done it, but it, it has no clear answer. And everybody really feels more comfortable if there's a clear answer. So, you know, I don't know whether the use of this section, if it is ever used, uh, would be limited to private roads? Or whether it might be catch basins and curbs? I don't know.
Street lights.
Street lights, possible, it's possible.
Stop signs.
You know, I, I, I don't think, and, and the next, you know, the next attorney will give you a different answer, but I don't think that you would be able to say that that stop sign specially benefits these, these homes. Uh, could you come up with some public improvement where there was a special benefit? My answer to you, without having any particular one in mind, is yes. But, but just to get us back on the same page, this was not intended to expand on what's already in existence, it was just meant to put all of what's possible in one place.
Question.
Mr. King?
We were discussing this, I was under the impression that, um, this road would apply if, for example, in a new development, that, uh, the homeowners wanted the city to come in and pave the road. That, uh, that's when this provision would be used, they could go in and do that and charge the residents for the cost of that. Would all the residents have to agree to that? Or would only a majority of the residents have to agree to that?
Well, there's a couple of steps in the answer to that question. The first step is that new developments, this wouldn't apply to new developments, because one of the conditions of getting subdivision approval, for example, is that you, uh, create your roads, you bring them up to city standards, and then you give those roads to the city. So presumably, when the city gets them, they don't need to be paved, they've been paved.
Bad example, but there is a one in mind, I don't know the name of the street, it's off of, um, Middle River Road, I believe. That, uh, there is a development out there, the road is in terrible shape.
And Drive, it's close, close to downtown. So you go onto the Rose Hill Railroad Trestle, and it's right on the right as you go up the hill.
Okay.
It's a private road, practically downtown, or is downtown. And it's, it's, uh, it's a bear, it's been a bear for a long time because the, um, uh, the road right of way is, uh, in conflict with, with, with pieces of private property. Decks are overhanging in the wrong places, and so it's, it's been an orphan for a while. But eventually, it'll give resolve then. Is it possible that those improvements will be, um, assessed to the property owners who live there? It's possible. Will it happen? I think it's unlikely because that should have been dealt with in a different way. But the answer to the, the second half of your question is that, uh, once the common council chooses to do this thing, whatever it is, And Drive, they can do it without the approval of any, uh, percentage of the population. By voter, the common council.
They can do it even without this being done.
They can do it under existing law.
Under existing law.
Yes, as long as they can figure out what that special benefit is. It's really, you take two snapshots, two financial snapshots, one before and one after, that's the limit of your, uh, of your special assessment. They don't creep, they don't by the way, they don't arrive at the number that way. But when it gets to court, if there's a challenge, that's what the court would do.
Okay. Then there isn't any increase in power of, of the common council by adopting this in a charter versus what exists currently?
None whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Does anybody want to make a motion regarding that issue? Seeing none, I guess we will keep that language as is and move on. Any other issues that you would like to review? Maybe a couple more minutes or just?
Just kind of what people said.
Take your time. And if you want, we can go through each person, what they said, if you would like to do that. Mr. King?
Yeah, I'm sensitive also to the size of the ballot. I think it's a, it's a, it's a valid observation and it's long. But, you know, I think that the process of, of what the state has adopted makes it cumbersome. The fact is that we have a number of offices, um, to be elected and, um, staggering has some advantages and some disadvantages. I think to try to sort all of that out at this late hour would be a cumbersome task. And I, and I'm not sure that we would come up with anything different. We have discussed all of these changes pretty thoroughly. And, uh, I, I wish that were shorter, maybe, uh, a recommendation to the common council that an overall organizational review of city employees as well as elected officials may be undertaken by another commission. And perhaps other changes in the future made to the charter to, to manage it. But I think to reopen that at this late point, I'm, I'm not sure that we would come up with anything that would feel any more comfortable than what we have today.
It seems to me that if we were to, say, stay with biennial elections, we would still have forty-five or forty-seven names on the ballot.
Exactly, we still have a huge.
All we would lose is the staggered Board of Ed people, so.
Even if we go back to, and, you know, cut the size of the council and commission.
That's been recommended by somebody in the room, we could do that.
We have, we have, we have done, we have a, well, we have a, is there a suggestion that the president of the common council might exist?
Yeah.
You're not going to get away that quick.
I think we could solve the length of ballot by putting the party lever back, so.
It's a little hard to do on those.
Strike that from the public record.
Anything else that someone would like to discuss? Paul's looking into some things, Mary or Mary?
Um, I would just have a question about, because I don't remember most of this, do you know the, the part about filling the vacancy of the mayor?
Section three two?
Section three two.
Okay.
Specifically the mayor.
Just, it says excepted that may be to the office of mayor. Now, refresh my memory, it means that if the mayor is not available to do his job, the president of the council then becomes the mayor.
That is true.
Yes, and what, and what, explain to me why that happened now? I mean, we already have an assistant to the mayor.
It's current.
It's current.
Current charter language. Current charter is the president of the council's.
I'm only asking because somebody asked me, and I said, you know, now I think about it, I don't remember. You know, does it have to be an elected official to do it, or could it be, because some communities do have deputy mayors, they have, you know, assistants to the mayor, why wouldn't the assistant to the mayor just take that, assume that position?
A appointed position.
Well, it's appointed, yeah, but it would have to be the, I guess that's my question, it has to be an elected person to take over the mayors. I mean, it would make sense that the one who knew more of what, be the assistant? No, the president of the council then has to resign, lose an old navy or what, I mean.
That's correct. But I mean, that's just, that tradition follows with what the line of succession, uh, ultimately reaches into the legislative branch at the, at the national level as well. Where the Speaker of the House is in the line of succession. So, I mean, there's a long tradition of filling elective offices with the next highest elective officials.
I guess my question is that, following, is that.
We're following tradition more than anything else, yes.
And one of the complications of the four-year term is that maybe the president of the council don't, doesn't want to give up his day job or her day job and become the mayor of the city.
That would be my point, why would you?
In which case, we would have some technical crisis if we had a new president of the council so that the old president that became mayor could resign, and I.
It's like a lot of work. I mean, a lot of.
We have not addressed that, other than to maintain the current procedure. And we've laid, layered on the complication four-year term.
It's almost unfair to know, if you were the president of the council, it's almost unfair to say, okay, now you're the mayor. I mean, hello. I was worried about you, but.
Would the president of the council like to address that?
Who's the council? Would you like to? I mean, it just, we had talked about this, and I'm thinking more about it.
No, I never thought about it.
Where's the balance there? Because now you've got somebody who's been presiding as the president of the council, say, okay, well, now I guess you're the mayor tomorrow.
And that's.
I mean, I don't know about you, but I, 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 I don't know, how many people would you say, yeah, okay, we're going to do that?
Well, you know, Mary, in New Jersey, the state of New Jersey, just by example, they do not have a lieutenant governor, and they've had this problem. And the, uh, Senate pro temp, the, the leader of the New Jersey State Senate, who was of the opposite party, became governor. So, I mean, that's, that's how it works, so it's, it's tradition across the country.
It's imperative.
I mean, it's right, just with its tradition.
I don't think it would be a surprise.
No, I know that you know that.
Yeah, they, when they accept.
When they come on that job, exactly, but as you said before, and a lot of things being tradition and the work, like you said before, oh, heck, for twenty years, nobody did anything about it, so why do you want to think about it? You know, don't worry about it, something will happen in twenty years, I haven't done anything else. But.
The question is. What would you propose in its place?
I, could we propose, um, giving him an out if he didn't want it? And, uh, another member of the council, who's the next highest elective office?
Which chance you got.
But would this make the main question?
I'm just, Mike, for a second, one of the things that, that may help you just understand probably why this is done with the new president of the council is that the public elects the twenty-one members of the city council. The twenty-one members of the council elect their president. So the mayor's assistant, or the people that work in the mayor's office are appointed by the mayor.
I understand that.
Not elected by the voters of the city. So I think what's happened is it gives the, it gives some freedoms to the election process that the president of the council would succeed the mayor if there were something to happen to him. And there better not be anything to happen to him in the next two years.
You understand. Well, then that would, so that was my question before, does that person who takes over that position have to be an elected person? If that's the case, then you don't have anywhere to go, but the council obviously, there would be another spot in between. My only part of that is, only have the territory. Um, like you say, what happens, did we come up with a plan if they said, no, I can't do it? Was that when they were going to do another election?
We have no provisions in here for special elections, which could be some option, I guess. The current.
Don't go away. Don't go away.
Just the being selected by. Yeah, Mr. Gotch?
What would happen if the president were called upon to assume the position of mayor and felt at that point unable to fulfill the duties of that office? Is that the sequence of succession would occur again. After the president became mayor, the council would choose a new president. The new mayor would resign and a new president would become mayor.
And where would the new old mayor go? Back to the council?
No.
He'd resign.
So he wouldn't be the president of the council anymore?
He would be, he would be free as a bird.
How about the current scenario? I believe the current president works for the city. And he would be in a position of being the almost new mayor, having to approve his own retirement.
No.
Doesn't he have to apply for early retirement?
I think he has to resign from his position of employee, be a full-time mayor.
And his.
You see, that's my confusion, this is, the succession.
We have a succession.
Isn't there a retirement board that he would have to go before?
Well, if I could, also, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be voting on, necessarily, the things that would do, in my opinion, the council would be doing that. If I were, if I were to, say, I were to take a leave of absence from the fire department, say, to speak. Thinking contractual issue would not be going on by myself if I assumed the duties of mayor, the council would throw down those, they would down the meeting.
And if, if, uh, retirement were in order, it might or might not occur depending on the age and condition of the new mayor. But if that occurred, as, you know. age and condition of the new mayor. But if that occurred, as, you know, as sometimes happens, people develop conflicts. They're not universal conflicts. They're conflicts relating to a specific issue. Like, if Joe wanted to retire, he's, he's mayor. And he wants to retire from the fire department, he's going to go to that pension board meeting as mayor and decline the vote because he has a conflict.
But it also, it also wouldn't mean that I would have my benefits if I were to retire now straight, or just ask for first grade retirement. I would naturally refuse myself on the vote. But there would be nothing that would improve the pension board voting on my retirement.
We have nobody else in line of succession.
We have no...
That's the only thing there is.
Unless we choose to address it. And I will remind the commission that I, we can still, we can present this to the council. And they may give us some direction and say, we love four-year terms. If they don't like four-year terms, it almost doesn't matter because it's a two-year time period. With the exact same succession issues, just two years versus four. If they decide that they like the four-year terms, they can tell us how they would like succession planned. We can come back and put it in our new draft. Or they may just say, go back and come up with some succession plan that is better than what you're doing currently. Because it seems to me it's just an issue because suddenly it would be a four-year burden for somebody as opposed to just a two-year.
Well, it might be, but it just, it just seems that there should be something, it just seems that there should be something more simple and clean and clearer than all the bop, 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 and down, the, you know, the succession between.
But not having a vice mayor or a deputy mayor. We don't really have a clean line of succession short of the president of the council. So, do you want to address that now? Or do you want to address that with a little more input from the...
I believe you discussed special elections. We would do a special election. And I think we decided that was not a leg to up to go with the commissioners.
Okay. Anything else about this?
Just one more.
Yes, Mary?
Wouldn't it be kind of unfair to say to Mr. Council President, you can either take the job or you're going to go back to being elected? Because if you don't take the job, you have to take the job and then resign the job. So, the next guy...
And then you're out.
And then you're out. And he might be the guy on the council who has, has the most vote, you know, the people, the guy the people wanted on the council. And I'm, you know...
You want to address that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
You become, but you can't become mayor because you really can't afford to give up your real job. So, you become mayor, the council elects a new president who can be mayor, you now do the right thing and resign as mayor so that the next person can become the president, or can become the mayor. And now you're not a council member anymore. It doesn't seem like you've been treated so fairly for taking one for the city.
Well, you know, the thing I would have to say is that I would have to weigh the decision on whether it's more important at the time, whether my employment, my continued employment is more important, or whether my employment as the mayor be more important to me. It's sort of the same situation now, knowing that if something were to happen to the mayor, I would have to...
You'd have a difficult decision to make.
A difficult decision. I have to make the decision of whether I want to do that. And I've made that decision twice now since the, since when he already had retired and I assumed the duties as president. There was a tremendous amount of discussion that had come up, in my absence, myself and the mayor, and the appropriation council's office, about just specifically this. And it will just come down to, I have to make a decision. Do I want to become the mayor of the city of Ann Arbor if something were to happen to Mark? Or if I wanted, if I did not want to?
And who appoints the replacements for the council members?
The town committees of the respective person that resigned.
So that if you became mayor, there would now be an opening that you could apply to the town committee to be named back to the council theoretically.
Here's a, here's a perfect example. Councilman James Johnson just got appointed as the city's fire marshal. He won't have to resign two years in the council. And he would be sending a letter to the Republican town committee saying that he has, will resign his seat in January and that they will be in their process of looking for a replacement. And then a replacement comes before, the replacement comes before the council for a full vote once the name is recommended by the town committee, by a respective town committee.
So, the name is recommended by the town committee, but the council has the ultimate authority?
Correct.
And if they decide, so if you made this move, you became the mayor, resigned it, if the town committee didn't renominate you, could the council still appoint you? Is it open? Board of Ed, anybody can apply and the Board of Ed chooses, although there is a town committee recommendation. Is the council the same?
I don't know if the town committee could reappoint. I don't know if the council could...
I don't think that's the same.
Without the town committee's endorsement?
Right. They have to make the recommendation, which is a possibility. The town committee can make the recommendation to re, put me back on the council if I choose to, if they choose to put me back on the council. And then the council would go down.
Okay. So, there would be a way back. It's just, you would have to make those arrangements at that time.
The involvement of the individual town committees is a matter of courtesy.
No question.
It's not required by two-dash-six, as you know.
Got it. Okay.
As a requirement for your taking over as president of the council at that time when you were elected, do you have to agree that you will fulfill all the responsibilities of that job, including succession to the mayor?
I don't know that the succession to the mayor is a required responsibility. It's understood in the charter that the president of the council will assume the duties of the mayor.
So, that in effect makes it a requirement.
Yeah.
Mr. Kachak, you tell you the best of your ability, the best of your ability.
It's the requirement of the, of the position.
Right.
Of, not of the, you know, I imagine he swears to oppose the best of his ability. It's the position that is the requirement. Whether that position is filled by individual A or B, I think.
Correct. Because when I, when I take the oath of office, I take the oath of office as a councilman. But then it's the members, twenty members of the council, twenty members of the council that elect their person as their president.
Wouldn't it be a tragedy if something happened to the mayor and then our president didn't want to take over and we lost the two highest elected officials? Wouldn't that be a tragedy? Couldn't we do something, I can't think of anything more eloquent to say than give him the right of first refusal? I can't think of anything more than that to say.
And where does it go after that?
Who's next?
Who then becomes?
The council decides who's...
The council decides, yes.
That's correct. Just the most definitely chosen place.
Yeah. So, I think that that would be the...
But you would remain the president. You would have to resign from the...
I think actually the election of the president by the body is just, I think it's a good way to go. And I think it's, I think it's probably important to keep it that. But let the, let the twenty members, twenty members of the council decide who the president's gonna be. Rather than, if I were to, if I were to refuse the office of mayor, have them have to keep me as president, they may choose they don't want to do that at that point. It's their decision.
You're right. So, but they could re-chose you if they...
If the town committee decided to renominate me, they certainly could choose me to come back on the council. They could certainly re-chose me and choose me to be the president again.
It's less than perfect, but I...
But it's functional. I think it's functional.
Anything else? Anything else?
I have to discuss something.
We have lots of notes over here, everybody. Okay, Paul?
No, I really, just one, the one issue. Section three dash eleven, which is the referendum position percentage.
Oh, sorry.
One of the, it seems to me when you look at, look at the changes that we've made as a whole, we've taken away from the voters, we've taken the city government away from the voters, have been made it more comfortable for, and I don't want to mean terribly, for the politicians or those who are elected. And I certainly understand that position in terms of, I've never been mayor, I've never been in that position, but I would understand that there is a majority. As a matter of fact, in terms of one of the years, the only person I think that testified that I thought gave a valid reason for having four years was the town clerk. I think they just have so much to do, or so vital to the cities, what the city has to do, that they really, they really should have four years. But having said that, when you look at as a whole, a number of these changes, we have taken, moving into four years, but we have no recall. And a number of, if you look across the state in the hundred sixty-nine towns, although a lot of towns are going towards four years, they do have recall positions, or some type of that. I, I think we owe it to the voters, the people, the taxpayers. So, I think that's a better way to address than their taxpayers, to reduce the amount for the referendum to five percent. One of the problems with reducing that number is you get now this band of five percent could effectively be an obstacle to the, to the legislative process by referending everything and everything going to... I don't see a gang of thirty-seven hundred people getting together on every single, I just don't see that. Thirty-seven hundred is a number of, of five percent. So, I'd ask the commissioners to, to look at that provision. Everything that we've done has made being in this government much more comfortable for those who are running it. And I think it's time that we maybe gave back a little bit. And this is the only place that I could say. I really want to readdress the four years, the staggering and everything that came with it. It was not worth it to me. But having said all that, maybe if we moved from fifteen to five percent, it really is thirty-seven hundred people. And I would challenge, I challenged myself to go out and get thirty-seven. I mean, I've been on a, I've had to go out and get petitions. And I think I've had to get twenty-five and I was crying the blues of going, knocking on doors. And so, thirty-seven hundred people is a lot. I think we owe it to the taxpayers that we give back just in its very small thing. Because what we're asking them to do then, to fight the legislative process by going out and collecting the five percent within the thirty days. But that's rather... I guess I would make a motion that we would, we would remove the ten percent and make it five percent. And try your minds to see what the commissioners feel.
Okay. A motion's been made that we take section three dash eleven and change the ten percent to five percent. Is there a second?
I just want to have a little more discussion on that.
Then you need a second to discuss it, yes?
Yeah, I do. I'd like...
So, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah. I'll second it. But I want to discuss a little more. Paul, did you say that five percent is thirty-seven hundred? Or is that your understanding?
What was it?
It's more like fifteen hundred.
Ten percent is...
Ten percent was thirty-four.
Right.
Five percent is seventeen hundred. Three percent is...
I think it supplies seventeen. That's why. I don't think there's a gang of seventeen hundred folks who are going to go out and try to run this city. God bless, the way that, you know, I don't, we don't want to get to that point. We don't ever want to get back to. But I just don't see that happening.
Okay. Any, any other comments?
I disagree. I disagree because we have made this so, we've added so much. We, I feel that we have, we've gone section by section and we have really cleaned things up and eliminated things that were ambiguous and, you know...
Well, I would agree with Mary. I think that for the referendum, we have given the power in the city to our council and our mayor. And what we're looking to do here is to take away some of their power so that people in the town who might not agree with the position taken by the mayor or the council can more easily overturn their decisions. And I think that you need to have a larger group of people. And I don't think five percent of the population in this, excuse me, the electors in the city is enough to try and overturn a decision made by the mayor or the council. I think you need to have a larger group of people who are involved and upset with what is happening. Five percent of the people is nowhere near enough, as far as I'm concerned.
Close to be more ready to compromise down to ten.
Can I ask a question about this? Assuming it's either five or ten percent, must be filed thirty days after publication of any ordinance, asking that the ordinance be submitted to the voters of the city at its next regular or special meeting. The ordinance shall be so submitted, and in such event, it shall not become effective unless a majority of the voters voting at such meeting vote in favor thereof. In effect, if we had seventeen hundred people sign a petition to revoke this, we have to, that's not a normal election that we're having.
No.
It's a special meeting.
These referenda are called special city meetings. It's like code.
And what?
Special election.
So, it is a special election?
It's what you would call an election.
All right. Just curious.
So, it would require a special election or a referendum?
Yes.
Or it could be a regular...
Or virtually, for any ordinance passed by the city, not just funding ordinances, any ordinance.
Any, this, this referendum language applies to any ordinance.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Then, you know, just make a venue on this for him. Then, the ordinance would not go in effect until after the citizens have an opportunity to vote either up or down.
That's correct.
So, this could be six months.
Well, it's thirty days for the signatures.
Right. But it doesn't say any time about when the special meeting or election could be. But by the time you schedule that, you could be looking out, you know, several months anyway. But, you know, I think if you're, if you're doing a bonding thing, if you're doing some special act, that, you know, is that a reasonable amount of time for an ordinance to become effective? Depends upon the issue, I guess.
Rick, I just want you to just confirm and understand, and I have, and I mean, perhaps the other members of the commission aren't necessarily aware of this. Let's just take the ordinance that adopts the city budget, which is probably the biggest one. If, if there, if there were a call or a vote, and the vote, you know, let's say that the petition was filed, and, and there was a vote, and they shot down the budget, what budget would be adopted, Mr. Kachak, at that point?
This is a quirk with respect to the budget ordinance only. But what happens is if the council fails to adopt a budget by May fifteenth, then the mayor's budget becomes the budget. The budget, in other words, the budget that the mayor proposed to the council becomes the budget. And if you have a petition that prevents the council's budget from being effective because it short-circuits this process, and May fifteenth comes around, courts have held that the mayor's budget then becomes the budget.
In that effect, happened in the city of Ann Arbor.
Yes, it did.
Yes, it did. So, so really, my, my point in, in asking him to explain that is that, that this is never going to be the Bethel situation, you know, to use the vocal example in our area, because of the budget. I mean, the budget ordinance is perhaps the biggest ordinance that the city regularly gets involved with that might provoke the type of outrage that I think Joan was talking about. I mean, this is, this referendum is, is for like electoral outrage. People are outraged. They're upset about a particular thing. And if we think back, other than the budget, I think the last ordinance that came down the pipe that might be close to this would have been, I think it was, might have been the parade ordinance that the, the city, the city passed that could have come close to this, where there was a level of outrage in the community that people would have signed or been aware enough to sign a petition. And, and that threshold has been routinely very high. And I agree with Paul that, that, you know, maybe it was the fifteen percent because, you know, the, the mayor and the council people, every two years, will get them. You know, if you had that kind of outrage, you'll remember those people in two years. But four years is kind of a different thing. It does change the balance of power a little bit. I don't know about five percent. I'm a little leery to do that, even though I know that the annual budget ordinance, you know, if, if the population signs a petition and they have a referendum and they defeat it, they really haven't accomplished anything, you know, effectively.
What, what applies though to bonding, correct?
They could end the bonding.
You could, you could in effect come in underneath that two-point-five.
Absolutely. You could stop the project. Absolutely. It would never be a vehicle for the budget challenge. That's right. It just never would. So, I don't think it's...
Mary?
Who confident could we get to run for city council?
Who competent could we get to run for city council if we told them that five percent of all of us could overturn whatever you say? I mean, the point is we're...
No, 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 no. I don't mean to interrupt. The only thing they're doing is putting it to referendum. They're not overturning.
But it's a small...
All they're doing is asking for a vote, that's all. Those 1,700 are asking for a vote. That's the, and then we all get to vote. Then all, it goes to the electors. So I don't mean to, I just don't want you to...
I see maybe one.
They may not change their mind. But I don't want you to think that 1,700...
Let's have a city council, city council run it. Give an enormous part of your life, come sit on the council and make ordinances and do things and run the city. But five percent of the people are going to be able to slow you down and set up a referendum. You know, I just think it's too few people.
I just had a question on this budget thing.
Any other questions or comments? Because I'll try, the motion's been made and seconded that we reduce section, in section three dash eleven, the referendum requirement from 10 percent of electors down to 5 percent of electors. All in favor of reducing? Please raise your hands. We have one vote, all opposed. Motion fails. But a good try though. Thank you, Paul. Okay. Anything else in here that we would like, that we would, anything else that we'd like to revisit? Or someone you'd like to get even with? I can tell you who, you can go after him, Paul.
He gave me a nice telling for no one to...
Paul, I've got the same position.
The fact is, that was a good discussion. Thank you. Anything else in here that you'd like to review?
Did we, the vacancy thing is...
Unless you want to make a motion. It's a bit complicated. We will have a chance to revisit that because again, the process is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gotchak, this now goes to the council. Council's going to look at it, decide what they like or don't like about this, send it back to us possibly, or throw the whole thing out. Do you know something I don't know?
I don't know anything you don't know.
And then we could change any provisions that we wanted at that point in time? Is that, or am I wrong?
The way this is going to happen, if you should decide tonight that you're done, at least for the time being, is this will be submitted to the common council. The common council will then have a period of time, it'll be 30 days, to review it, both public hearing and make recommendations for any changes that they'd like to see in your draft back to you. And, and then the statute says that they shall confer with you with respect to those recommendations. Then the ball shifts back here. You consider those recommendations. You can choose to make changes to your draft or, or not. And then you prepare a final report and that's submitted back to the common council. At that point, the common council can accept or reject any or all of the proposals that you've made. And, and with respect to those that have been rejected, there can be a petition drive to reintroduce them.
Now we need 10 percent.
15. And with respect to the portions that they favor, they can choose to present them to the voters.
So we'll ask the commissioners. This has been so much fun. Are we going to keep working at it or are we done?
We're done. Probably come back 17...
Can I, can I have a motion that we accept our draft, draft version three as our version of the charter revision for 2008?
So moved.
Motion been made by Mr. King, seconded by Mrs. Mead. Any discussion? Saying none, I will try your minds, all in favor of accepting the draft version three? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. What do we do next? We're done.
Well, wait, wait. At this point, we have to convey the approved draft to, with an enclosure letter at least or a cover letter to the city clerk.
Can we just give it to Joe? He's here.
No. You don't want to hand it to him tonight.
And the town clerk.
But we're going to submit this on the 29th of December, correct?
That's correct.
And what does that mean?
That means I file it there.
Okay.
As of the 29th.
That's correct.
Do you understand, you might want to address this to the president of the council, why?
Why are you doing this the 29th?
We're doing it late in the month because the council will not be able to consider it. And, and the thinking was back a couple of months ago, that you didn't want to burden the common council with the holiday season. It was going to mess up their...
I remember that.
And one of the things, if you gave it to us now, we'd have to settle it by the seventh week of January.
All right. Okay. And by submitting it on the 29th, does that mean we go to the council meeting? We simply mail it and postmark it at that point in time? What are the specific logistics of getting it to them on the 29th?
What you have to do is you have to get it to the town clerk. And, and because of our structure of government, it makes, I'm going to give a copy to the city clerk.
Okay. Okay. Has everybody looked at there? That I had emailed you and I handed out tonight slight changes to it. I would like to thank the authors involved. Mr. Gotchak wrote most of it and Mrs. Mead corrected it somewhat inelegantly, I might add.
Oh, but we have real words in it.
But she meant well.
Not made up words.
If you're happy with it.
Reminds me of business speak. I mean, or you convert a verb into a noun just for the heck of it.
All right. Would anyone, does anyone want to add, add or, add or change anything in those letters? There's no real pride of authorship so much as, is it efficient? Do you feel we need greater explanation of what we did and didn't do?
Yeah.
I think that maybe as per verbal...
Do you think we need anything more here?
No, I think it's fine.
It's a starting point. They can invite us in if they would like to talk to us or they could just watch this TV show where we're all explaining elegantly.
I make a motion that we...
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the letter. Any discussion on that?
Draft four of the letter to draft three of the charter.
That's right. And I will, like to just remind everybody that the word in there is renumbering as opposed to whatever the elegant, whatever the elegant...
Should we, should us add one sentence in here that we'd be glad to volunteer to for the next charter revision?
Yes, you know, I would also add, the only thing I think, well, if, what I didn't do that I would like to do is I do think, I do think that letter, besides my signature, we should have the names of all members of the commission included on that. So I think we would do that. Any other questions or comments about that? I would ask the secretary to add everybody's names.
I would like to thank John.
Below your name.
Any other points of discussion? And you all want to keep renumbering as opposed to where appropriate numerical redesignations have also been shown? My letter said numerical redesignations were shown.
Give it up.
Okay. All in favor of sending the letter as is with the additional names of the commission members on it? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Anything else to come before the commission?
I would like to make one statement.
Mr. King?
I want to thank everybody at this table. It's been, you know, a real exercise over the past 16 months and I've enjoyed everybody's participation in this. I think you're all a great group of professionals and very thoughtful in what you've done. It's been an honor and a pleasure for me to sit in this commission. And I know I've been controversial at points in terms of wanting this thing to continue to the wee hours of the morning, which nobody wanted to do, but I can understand that. But again, thank you very much. It really has been an honor serving with you all.
Thank you, and miss...
He's talking like he thinks this is over.
And it is not over.
The council's going to get back with...
That's right.
It may be the last time we're all together.
Oh, no, we will all be together at least one more time. A motion's been made and seconded. Did we vote on adjourning? All in favor to adjourn, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
You guys sure know how to throw a party, I'll tell you.
Okay, so we need one more change.
Thank you all. Hey, thank you. It should be fun. We'll see where it goes. Joe, what do you think?
We tried to save you.
We tried to save you.